Oh, there she is. Hi, Dean. All right, Dennis, why don't you?
All set?
Yep.
Jeff's ready?
Ready.
Good. Okay. All right, so good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 2021 meeting of the Brighton zoning Board of Appeals. I think hopefully everyone knows our general way of handling things. Let me just go over it quickly that we have four applications tonight. And then we'll go through those. When the application is called, then you can identify yourself and we will allow you to speak. And once you finish explaining to us what you think or why you think we should approve your application, we will then ask if there's anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding it. And if there is, they will. If there isn't, then we'll close the public hearing and then move to the next application. Now, once we've finished those, we will go through them one by one. So you're welcome to stay on and hear the deliberation. There's no other cross talk or discussion between the board members and applicants once the public hearings are closed. And if you don't want to stay on, then you can call Mr. Di Stefano in the building office tomorrow and find out what the result of your application was. So Rick, is there anything you want to tell us before the roll?
I have nothing. Does anybody, any members have any questions regarding any applications?
Okay. Very good. Was the meeting properly advertised, Rick?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it was advertised in the Brighton Post of January 28, 2021.
Okay, so could you call the roll?
Mr. Primo.
Here.
Ms. Schwartz.
Here.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yeah.
Ms. Dale.
Here.
Mr. Mites.
Here.
Ms. Watson.
Here.
And Ms. Schmidt.
Here.
But the record show all members are present.
Okay, so the first course of biz is we have some minutes here from the December 2nd meeting. Is there, are there any corrections, additions, deletions from those minutes?
Member Schwartz?
Yes.
Okay. On page nine, line 18, the first word is various, V A R I O U S. On page 21, the last word should be deleted and the first word on line 22 should be deleted. On page 23, line six, the second word should be seats, S E A T S, and the same thing in line seven. After the number, it should say seats, S E A T S. On page 29, line 11, I believe the last word should be size, S I Z E. On page 30, line five, delete the last word. Page 31, line 20, delete the last two words. Page 36, line 21, the second word should be as. Line, I'm sorry, page 37. Line 13, the middle of the word should be presented, E D, and then page 41. Line 15, after the word character, please insert of the. And pay, I'm sorry, line 17, the number should be 7D, 7-0. And lastly, page 45, line 15, the initials should be S M is in Mary A. And that's all I have.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything else? Okay, so.
Remember, this is member right, I have a question. The motions for denial for application 9A0420 and the second one, 10A0220. The motion references an exhibit A that isn't included as part of the minutes. I just wanted to confirm that they didn't need to be an addendum to these minutes because obviously our approval is based on that attachment.
And do you have a answer to that?
Yeah, they should be part of the record of proceedings. What we're doing now is making sure that we have a comprehensive transcript of all of the proceedings. That's really under the governor's executive order. So sure, we should have all exhibits and other material referenced in the resolution to those minutes or to the transcript really of the public hearing and the debate and decisions.
Good.
Even if they're filed separately, still want them.
Just, just because, because what we're representing that this is the full transcript, if you will. Remember that, that executive order requires us not just to record, not just to keep exhibits like we normally have, but also to have a full transcript. So if somebody said, give me the transcript of the December 2nd, 2020 meeting, they should get the transcript with whatever exhibit is referred to it in it. I'm not saying all exhibits, but because that exhibit is referred to in the resolution, you have an incomplete transcript without that exhibit being attached.
Good.
That should be part of, that should be part of the motion to amend the.
Right, yes, I agree. Okay. Go ahead. All right. Are we set on this then? As far as can someone make a motion for these minutes, please?
I have one other change.
Sorry, I can't hear you. I could hear your voice, but not.
Page 45, line nine. After the sixth word, which is that, it should be in parentheses, the word one. It's three separate points. The other two are preceded by the words two and three. And that point should have the word one in front of it.
Good.
So I moved to approve the minutes of the December 2nd meeting as amended and with both attachments to the relevant approvals attached.
Member Schwartz, seconds.
Okay, very good.
Motion is to approve with corrections and amendments. Mr. Primo.
I abstain.
Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Ms. Dale.
Yes.
Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Rick, whenever you're ready, you could read the first application.
Okay, first, just in case there's anybody online for the applications, 12A0520 and 12A0620, those applications have been postponed to the March meeting.
Okay.
Application 1A0121, application of Congregation Light of Israel, owner of property located at 1675 Monroe Avenue for renewal of a temporary revocable use permit pursuant to section 219-4 to erect a tent and hold up to six outdoor special events for the years 2021 and 2022. I'll describe the application and plans on file.
Okay, and I see Mr. Goldman ESQ there, so please proceed when you're ready, sir.
I am ready. I'm just trying to see, my video is on. It looks like I am all set. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm in a slightly different capacity tonight. I'm not acting as attorney as much as as a member of Congregation Light of Israel. I reside at 59 Granchwood Lane in the town of Brighton. With us tonight on the application is Jeff Springett, whose name will display for those of you looking at the display is Lynn Springett, his better half. And he is the vice president of the synagogue. We're here this evening for a renewal, if you will, the temporary revocable use permit, which was first granted in September of 2013 for one year and continues thereafter every two years as a TNR to allow a tent for special events up to six times per year. This has been successfully done over the course of the last seven years. The board has imposed conditions which are incorporated in the decision letter of November 9, 2018, which we intend to comply with and continue to comply with. It was part of the application package that each of you received. What you see, what you did see in front of you for a moment was the site plan, and you see it again. And, and the site plan does allow for the placement of a tent. You may have seen the tent in the front of the, of the lot during the, during the high holidays this year. And, and that was by special accommodation by the town due to COVID. So we are, again, willing to comply with all conditions that we have previously lived with and, and continue to live with and would request the board's indulgence for another two-year TNR on this. I don't know if Jeffrey has anything to add at this point?
Not really, Jerry. I think you've covered it. It's pretty much the same structure, the same spacing, same uses that we have done in the past.
Jeff, could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes. Sure. Jeff Springett, Vice President of the Congregation Light of Israel.
Thank you.
And Rick, member right, Rick, can you just confirm there haven't been any complaints in the five, six-year history of this temporary revocable use permit?
I can confirm that, yes.
Okay.
This is member Watson. I have a question. I'm just wondering if you anticipate any changes in the frequency of use this year or next year, whether due to COVID or anything else?
Well, if any, no, we don't. And you know, the, the type of use inside may change with the spacing of tables. The use always corresponds to certain holidays that occurred during the course of the year. So we would be hopeful that we would be able to comply with all the Monroe County Health Department and New York State COVID recommendations and regulations to do that.
I would, this is Attorney Gordon. I do want to just contribute this thought to both Mr. Goldman and Mr. Springett that while this application is for permission to use the tent six times a year, if the need did arise for more use due to COVID, we do have in place an emergency order that allows temporary and revocable tent permits to be granted administratively by staff so that if that need arose on an one, you know, on an individual basis, you would be able to apply administratively for that approval without coming to the CBA.
We appreciate that information and we'll keep that under our consideration and under our yarmulke, so to speak.
We, we availed ourselves of that in dealing with the, with the high holidays this year in, in September. And, and we do appreciate the town's indulgence in dealing with that and appreciate counsel to the board pointing that out for the board's benefit. But at this point, we anticipate that the six times a year should be, should be sufficient for our needs.
Okay.
Thank you. I do have one more question. I, I see that in previous years, the, the variance was granted for a January through December timeline for two years. Being that it is February now, I'm wondering what dates you are requesting for the two years?
Well, given, given the fact that we have not requested anything for the month of, of January, if we want to do it two years from, from March, I think we would be happy with that. That would give us a little bit of leeway. The expectation is that our prime periods of use would be in the summer and the fall is Jewish holidays fall. But if we can, if we can start it at March, March 1, that would be great.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from the board members? Okay. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You thank you.
Is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearings closed.
Application 2A0121, application of Skylight Signs, agent and farm management, owner of property located at 1057 East Henry Road for sign variance from section 207-32 to allow for a freestanding identification sign or not allowed by code. I'll describe an application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking for this application?
Hello, Mr. Mites. This is Ralph Varanis here with Skylight Signs.
Well, well, well. How are you, Mr. Varanis?
I'm good, thank you. How are you?
Good. So please proceed when you're ready.
I will. Thank you very much for hearing us or hearing me tonight. Unfortunately, Mr. Flom, the landlord, was unable to be available. So I'll do my best to answer any questions you have when I'm, when I'm finished.
Okay.
What brought us here tonight is they signed a tenant in the building and the tenant was pushing for a monument sign. And I think we all know how that goes. I mean, we, you know, had to explain to them how they really had no chance of getting their own monument sign with just their name on it out by the road. It, it just wasn't going to happen. And they were concerned with, you know, some of their vendors and deliveries, being able to find them easily. And we ended up coming up with, you know, more properly identifying the address so that you're really not thinking twice about it when you're driving by if you're looking for it. And the building's pretty far back, so you, you really don't see anybody that's in the building from the road. So we thought this is, you know, I, I know how the town of Brighton reacts to monument signs. I, I've tried a couple of times in the past and have not succeeded. But this situation, I did appear a little different to me being on East Henryetta Road. And being that there are monument signs along East, East Henryetta Road, and I won't get into which ones they are, but there's probably five or six of them. So we thought we weren't asking for anything that was out of character. There's no name on it. I know that one of the comments from the ARB was the way we designed the base. If I may just speak about that. The, the base was designed to appear like brick. And maybe it wasn't the best idea. The landlord doesn't really want to use real brick either. And I'd just like to throw a suggestion out if I may, in case anybody was going to ask about it. We were thinking of painting that a solid color and really just simplifying it. So I'm assuming you see two signs in front of you, not just the 1057. But do you also see the sign we're proposing for a little farther into the property?
Ralph, no, only because that isn't really, you know.
Oh, okay.
Business tonight. The only thing that we're looking at is the roadside sign because the other sign is a permitted sign.
Okay, I apologize. Thank you for that. So, you know, that's really what brought us here, you know? I mean, usually when I go into this, I, I know what the decisions are going to be before they are. But I thought this was a little different and we're hoping you may think the same way.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just comment on the Architect Review Board review. They did have some design issues with this and tabled the application. I think that I think this board should leave that up to the Architecture Review Board and let them make their determination based on the redesign or whatever the applicant brings back to the Architecture Review Board. I think we just really just look at it for a freestanding sign located and not get too much in the design of it.
Rick, can I ask a question, though? It's Judy. I, I, you know how I feel about having the number of a, of a building out where it's visible. I hope that when it does go back to ARB, though, that they definitely keep this 1057. When I went out to look at it, there's just a, you know, a sign now in the ground that says 1057. If that hadn't been there, there was no way I would have seen it, so.
Yeah, let, let me say, it's, it's the content we can certainly, you know, decide. It's the design of that content. We're not, we're, basically, if we approve this sign, the content is still going to be 1057.
Okay, it's, that might be considered, it'll be fine.
It's, it's the design of the sign, actually, and really it just comes down to the design of the base. That's what the Architecture Review.
Okay, not the text or anything. Okay, great, thank you.
The copy would be up to us, Judy.
This is, this is member Dale. I had, I had a quick question. Could, would you mind? How, how far from the road is the front of the building itself?
The front of the building, if, if I had to take a guess and I did some measuring on Google, I'd say it's about 250 feet from the road.
Thank you.
Actually, 276 for the.
Okay, thank you. My copy is small and I was, I was struggling
From the right away.
To read that number. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Ralph, one other thing, you know, you're calling it a business center. Can you talk about the occupancy of this building and what's that, not a list, but are there multiple tenants in this building?
Uh, I guess there are, Dennis. I have a company called Miraclon, M I R A C L O N. They were the tenant who was pushing for their own sign.
Right.
And then there's a company called Pine Environmental.
Okay.
A company called Step by Step.
Okay.
And Zebart.
Okay. Okay, so there are multiple people that have multiple entrances in this building, then?
Right, and from what I can tell, you, until you get into like, until you get to 270 feet, you hardly even see the building.
Right.
It's, it's buried back there and I can see where someone might be confused as to where to go.
Okay.
And I guess this is a good time to say that second sign that Ralph previously referred to is a directional sign that's permitted by code that will basically spell out the tenants and there's, I think there's suite numbers. So that will give, once you're on the property, that will give visitors some direction on what the tenants are and where they're located.
Right, right. Thank you, Rick.
Okay. Also, I think there's, you know, quite, quite a few, as Ralph mentioned, but also on Townline, you know, we have these four-lane and multiple-lane highways where there's a lot of these buildings where people are looking for some kind of wayfinding. So I think it is quite common in this area. Okay.
I just have, I just have one clarification with Ralph. On your application, it was number B where it asks about a self-imposed hardship. The answer was, our difficulty is self-imposed. Now, is that, was that just a?
Well, I, I guess I understood, I guess I understood that. I always think about it like when the landlord bought the property, he knew what he was up against when it came to having a sign like this. So I thought, you know, we, we kind of started the mess knowing it going in. Was I not thinking that the right way?
No, I, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, exactly how you were interpreting that question, that's all.
Okay.
If I interpreted it wrong, I, I apologize.
That's okay, Ralph, that's fine.
Okay, okay.
Okay. All right, so board members, anyone else with a quick, go ahead, Ken.
Yep, thanks. The plan, say, a 10-foot setback, I just want to clarify, is that a 10-foot setback from the state right-of-way line or from some other location? Because it doesn't really specify.
As far as I know, it would be the state right-of, right-of-way line or the property line. And I would refer to Rick for that. I mean, we would, you know, pinpoint which line we should be measuring from and.
Same line. The front property line will be the state right-of-way line.
Yep, right, okay. That's what I thought was the front property line, yes.
Okay, that's, that's typical setback requirement for freestanding signs that we do permit by code. So they're meeting that regulation of the code.
Yeah, I just, I just was hoping for just a little bit more detail in terms of the specification in the plan itself to say a 10-foot setback from the New York State right-of-way. 15A.
Okay. I think that's, yes, go ahead.
Member right. I know that we are approving the existence or asked, being asked to approve the existence of a freestanding sign and not necessarily the aesthetic details of it. But I'm assuming that we're also approving the size or the maximum size of the signage. So can you give some color as to the size, the 21 square feet, the size of the lettering confirming or not confirming that this is the smallest really necessary to serve the tenant's purpose? Or, or, you know, wayfinding purposes for the other building occupants?
I, I think I got that. You're referencing what the letter sizes compared to viewability?
Sure, and, and the overall size of the sign, is that, you know, sort of the smallest sign that serves the purpose?
Okay, is that something you want me to get to you?
Well, I think it's just, I think, Ralph, it's just really a clarification. In other words, you guys designed the sign. The tenant didn't come to you and say, I want a 21-square-foot sign. You, you were asked to design a sign, meaning skylight signs, to do that. And what you did was to size it accordingly to what? I guess I think that's what Andrea's saying.
I, I, if I may, yes, I, I based that on the, the open area of that, the front of that building. There's a lot of grass area, so it's just, I guess it's freely open. And at three foot by seven foot, it's, it's the same size or smaller than the monument signs you'll find along that road. You know, to make it any smaller, you know, you know, everything goes down, you know, all your letter sizes, of course, would go down, as you were saying. And you know, I mean, anything's possible. I guess I can make anything smaller if we try to, but we, I just thought this fit that property best.
Okay, yeah.
How does this compare to the size of the sign with just 1057 that's up there now?
That sign, if I'm not mistaken, is a two-square-foot sign that beats code, meets code, which is why it's there.
Probably a code.
Okay.
Probably a code-aloud sign.
It's a code-aloud sign.
Probably a code-aloud sign.
Correct.
But it's not really working for them. People aren't catching it like I think you might have mentioned.
Yeah, I think it's safe to say that the posted speed limit might be 35 on this road, but I'm sure not many cars are doing 35 on this road, right?
Right.
Right. Okay. All right. So board members, any other questions, please? Okay, I guess we're set then, Ralph. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and now I'll reach out to somebody tomorrow.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thanks.
Bye-bye.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in the audience, I'm sorry, on the call regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearings closed.
Application 2A0221, application of Lat Bar V, owner, owner of property located at 2601 Lockville Boulevard for an area variance from section 205-12, allow for the reuse from a professional office building to a medical office building with 45 parking spaces and move the minimum 57 parking spaces required by code. I'll also have an application and plans on file.
Okay, so who do we have speaking on this application?
We have me, Joe Ardieta from Vanguard Engineering, representing Bar V for the 2601 Lockville.
All right, Joe, just give us an address, please.
My, well, Vanguard Engineering's address is 133 South Fitzhugh Street, Rochester, 14608.
Okay, then go ahead, please.
But I'm not there, I'm home.
Okay, that's okay.
All right. So the applicant purchased this building and has done some renovations. There's. There's roughly eighty-five hundred square feet of usable space. Um, the applicant is, uh, a doctor's, a use, the use is medical. And he's going to take up the entire first floor i- in two offices. Um, he, I believe his ENT and I believe his, I think it's his wife is, uh, audiologist. So a lot of their work is done together. Um, you could see from the letter that we presented their parking demand based on their staff and clients that they have. And then, in addition to that, since they don't have tenants scheduled for the basement, what I did was I, I applied the most strict, uh, parking regulation, which is one per hundred and fifty square feet. Adding what his demand on the first floor and then the most strict demand that could apply in the basement comes to forty spaces. And the site has forty-five currently. Um, if we were to apply the one space per hundred and fifty square feet over the entire building, then, um, we would have to add, and you could see from the plan that was presented, dashed the lines that shows where we would expand the parking to meet code. However, in that case, we would then violate code uh, in another section by placing, uh, parking too close to the property line. And we would do that in three locations, on three properties. And we'd also remove trees, uh, in order to meet code, whereas the applicant just doesn't need it. So here, I'm trying to save the applicant money by not having to put in asphalt pavement, not increase the impervious surface by letting pavement stay as is.
Okay. Um, can you tell us wh- what type of medical operation the owner of the building is going to be doing on the first floor?
Ear, nose, throat with, in the first office and then an audiologist in the second.
Okay, are these relocated from another premises or what, where is, is this practice new or is it a relocation?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay. All right, other questions by the board members?
Hey, can you speak a little bit?
One, maybe, uh, both to the applicant and a little bit to Rick with the, uh, land that wouldn't be used with now, uh, because they began this variance. Is there any way we can have it so if in the future they land is necessary for parking, we'd make sure it's, it's still available?
So you're talking about land banking the parking, um, at, you know, that's certainly a possibility that the applicant would, the applicant was actually prepared to have, to try to meet code on this. He didn't want to, um, and then we told him, you know, once I spoke with him and, and did an analysis of what he re- required for parking, I was the one who said, you shouldn't have to meet code on the parking on here if you don't need that parking. So if he, if, so if we're to fast forward now and, and then say, we'll have to land bank this uh, and reserve it for parking in the future, I think he'll have no problem with that since he was prepared to try to have to be code in the first place. With the understanding, though, that this land bank parking will violate section two oh five eighteen A.
As it would require.
Right. I- in order to land bank that parking, we'd still have to go through the whole process to say, okay, can it be built? And if it's being built, what are the variances that would be necessary? Um, it'd still have to go through site plan approval, because once it's banked, then they have the right to install it. So at this point in time, they don't have right to install it. Um, so banking would maybe basically go right through the same processes they would if they were constructing it.
Yeah, and what in, what do we, what we've typically been doing on this? I mean, the, the thing that always gets me, and, and I know this a little bit from experiences, you don't think you need the parking and somehow the cha- there's a change or the client mix changes or
Right.
you get a new tenant or something like that, then you need it.
Right. And that's exactly where we are with this property. This property was built for a professional office. Um, and it actually, the original owner used it in that manner. He sold the property, which was used for, uh, professional office. And then the last sale, we had medical use wanting to go in there. So yes, we are right up against that situation here.
And just to, just to, hold on, just to answer about the past or how we handle it, I think, you know, we're reacting to a very specific thing here. And we've done that in numerous locations around Brighton where if there's a variance, you know, granted for this, it's granted for these specific uses. So if the owner decided he was going to move his practice somewhere else and move me or somebody else in, then we would have to listen to the case, you know, as it relates to the parking for that. So we would always have the ability to revisit it. Okay.
This is, this is member Wright, um, and I think some of my questions kind of speak to that issue. I think you said with what's on the, uh, upper floor of this building, there's two doctors and that would mean there's five support staff, uh, supporting those two doctors?
Actually, so, um, he allocated seven for staff.
But doesn't that include the two doctors as well or no?
Yes.
Okay, so, so five staff working at any time plus two doctors. Um, how many doctor's offices are there? I mean, is there the potential for them to expand the practices and have additional, uh, both doctors and staff? Or is the space limitation or the use of an ENT and audiologist such that you wouldn't, based on the square footage in this building or the layout, wouldn't be able to add additional doctors or staff to this location?
They didn't provide me with any intent to expand beyond what they're doing. They're, they're taking the first floor in its entirety in those two offices just for them, and, and that's it. Yeah, and just so you know, you know, the, the calculation that we did calls for, uh, mixed demand and meeting code of something to forty spaces. There's actually forty-five spaces on site there, so there is some leeway.
Okay, did you have another question, An- Andrea?
Uh, why, I guess my other question was, do you have a floor plan? But I'm guessing you don't have a floor plan of what their upper floor looks like.
I do not. They usually, they don't give site engineers floor plans, uh, you know, we're deprived.
Uh, this is number Dale. How about hours of operation?
I believe it's normal medical business hours. It'll be probably, you know, eight to four, nine to five.
Monday through Friday?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, other questions for the applicant? Okay, I hear none. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ardieta.
Pronunciation, thank you.
All right, is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Yep.
Application two A O three twenty-one, application of Mark Bayer, Bayer Landscape and Architect, agent, Rufus Judson, owner of property located at thirty-five forty-one Elmwood Avenue. For one, an area variance from section two oh three dash two-point-one B two to allow pool cabana to be nine hundred and sixty-eight square feet, move the minimum two hundred and fifty square feet allowed by code. And two, an area variance in section two oh seven dash six A one, allow set cabana to be twenty-three-point-six feet in height to the ridge line and thirty-point-five feet in height to the top of the chimney and move the maximum sixteen feet and height allowed by code. Also, found an application and plans on file.
Good evening. I am, uh, Mark Bayer with Bayer Landscape Architecture. Um, I have with me tonight, um, Rufus Judson, uh, owner of the property, Samantha Palukas, who's with our office, and, uh, Ty Allen, I believe was with us from New Energy. I don't know if he's still with us. Um, thank you for, uh, hearing our application tonight.
Mark, Mark, can you just give us an address for the record, please?
Yes, it is thirty-five forty-one Elmwood Avenue.
Okay, very good. Please proceed.
Thank you. Um, so we're here tonight to talk about, um, project in the backyard at the residence. Um, it's part of a larger project, um, where we're doing some enhancements to the rear terrace. Um, we're developing a, a small area for an outdoor spa, uh, hot tub. Um, and then we, we are focused tonight on what I refer to as the pool yard. Um, we're creating a pool yard. This is a landmark residence, historic residence, and one of our objectives, um, from very, very early on in the project was to accommodate, uh, the Judsons' desire for a, a pool, but do so in a really sensitive manner so that the, this landmark home and landmark property really, uh, worked seamlessly with, with the pool and the pool yard. So what we have done is actually, we've in very intentionally sighted the pool and the pool cabana to parallel with the east property line and snugged it toward that end of the site. And the reason for that is there's been this wonderful view that, uh, this property has, which is the sight line that goes back probably four hundred feet beyond this property to neighboring properties and then also has glimpses of the golf course. So very important to position this building to preserve that historic character, but also, uh, to be very conscious of, um, neighboring properties and, um, position it so that it is no, has no impact on the, the adjacent properties or the neighborhood whatsoever. Um, and, um, we're here, you know, tonight to talk about, um, two variances, two area variances, uh, for the pool cabana. Um, and one is related to the height of the cabana, the other is related to the area of the cabana. Just want to step back for just a minute and, and let you know that we did go and talk to, um, the Historic Preservation Commission last week. Um, they were, I think, very, very pleased with this application, um, on many, many counts. Uh, we do have to go back, assuming, uh, the variances are granted tonight. We would have to go back to them and talk to them about the specifics of, of finishes and materials for the cabana. But, um, I, I think it's fair to say that they expressed nothing but, um, they had nothing but good things to say about it, um, in terms of sensitivity and appropriateness, uh, for this very significant property. And when we speak about, um, the area variances for this, and I'll talk about both of them kind of combined, um, we're, we're talking about floor area. Um, we have a, a larger-than-allowed building, as you know, nine hundred and sixty-two, sixty-eight square feet um, in an area where two hundred and fifty are allowed. And, um, in, in that light, um, again, and in the light of the, the higher uh, building requirement being that we're asking for a twenty-three-foot-six ridge, maximum ridge line, and the chimney goes up higher to thirty-feet-six. All of this really comes back to a, a very, very careful analysis of the, the residence. Again, uh, one of Brighton's, I think, finest historic structures, residential historic structures. Um, it's, it's large, it's, it's scale is unique. Um, and, um, so what we have tried to do, very, very carefully, working with, uh, Ty Allen, who is the architect from New Energy Works that worked on the building on our team, uh, we've tried to scale this building, um, and design it so that it, it fits, um, in a very appropriate way, um, against the backdrop of this very large residential structure, very large two-and-a-half-acre property. So, um, the, 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 the scale of the building, um, being larger is very deliberate. It would, it looks right when it sits here. And it also is very important to note that it's meeting this family's, you know, program and needs. And, and going back to what I said initially, which was the, we very intentionally created a pool yard as opposed to sticking the pool kind of off the patio or something like that. We've, we created a space for it. And, um, in doing that, um, you know, I think, uh, again, it, the, the reason for it was that we didn't want to interrupt that historic view, but we also, um, just felt that pools in the back of houses like this never look right unless they're kind of on their own. And in doing that, uh, the pool cabana that within this pool yard needed to accommodate, uh, changing so that, again, there isn't traffic in and out, in and out of this spectacular interior of the, the main residence. We can confine, um, you know, wet feet and changing and all of that that goes with it to the pool cabana. It's self-sufficient. The pool equipment is all hidden and housed within the cabana. And the main room is scaled to accommodate, um, the Judsons' growing family and, and friends. And, um, so scale-wise, tha- that's what we've done. Um, in terms of the height, again, this, this building has, uh, better than, I think, twelve-twelve roof pitches on the main house. So the roof lines are very, um, you know, very steep in this, in this traditional, uh, very classic home. And we, Ty Allen and his group at New Energy, working with us, um, has very carefully tried to architecturally complement the main residence with, with similar roof lines, similar proportions and similar detailing. And for that reason, you cannot do a sixteen-foot-high building that would look right next to this house. It, with those twelve-twelve pitches, that's not very practical or even feasible. In the chimney details, we've picked up, uh, from the main building to make it look uh, very much like the other chimneys on the residence. And, and they are, again, with these roof lines, necessarily the chimney has to be higher. Um, again, just kind of getting back to some of the concerns, um, that, um, come with the project, any project, is making sure we're being good neighbors. Um, and I think, uh, we have talked to the, um, the Simmons, what is the Sands, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Sands, who live adjacent below. We, we've intentionally sighted, uh, this, um, cabana building to be adjacent to what is their pool equipment shed. Um, we've also talked to the neighbors on the, on the west side, um, the Gianninis, um, and Rufus spoke to them, Rufus Judson, and I think they were fine with the project. Um, and again, we are way off of the Elmwood Avenue, if you know the property, we are way back. Uh, we are going to be heavily buffered and, uh, really no, no negative impacts whatsoever on the neighborhood uh, or the environment in doing this project. Um, so again, to summarize, um, you know, and I'd like to just show you, uh, as I go through some summary comments, just some of the other images to get you more, um, if we could, if we could look at, uh, this is just the floor plan for the cabana. I was describing, uh, the main, the main room, which will accommodate outdoor dining. Uh, uh, this building will open up so that it'll, it'll relate very nicely to the pool. Um, there is the changing room and bathroom, as I mentioned, so the nobody has to run in and out of the house with, with wet feet. Um, and the entertaining related to the pool can be accommodated in the pool yard and, um, pool equipment completely accommodated and concealed in the building. Um, the elevation drawings, um, again, show you the very steep roof pitches, which match with the residence. And, uh, you know, the, this type of detailing is, is exactly drawn from the, from the main house. And again, we've scaled, scaled this chimney and this building to kind of fit nicely, um, within the two-and-a-half-acre site and, um, a- against the backdrop of the really large home. So, um, that's, that's that. This is, uh, some imagery. I just want to share this with you because it gives you a sense of the scale um, and how the roof lines relate and the way that we have very carefully, um, pushed the, the pool yard off towards the, um, the east property line so that, that magnificent south lawn in main view from the residence can be maintained and that the pool yard and the pool cabana become their own element. And again, And again, from the main residence, you will not see into the pool yard. You have to enter the pool yard to kind of experience that. And from the neighboring property, you can see there is already a fairly, there's a, there's a fairly heavy buffer over there, but we will be planting the property lines very fully and maintaining privacy for the neighbors and for the Judsons in doing that. So we can go to the next image. This is just again, to just explain to you why the building is cited where it is. From, you know, again, being very sensitive to the historic nature of the property, this particular sighting accomplishes preservation of this view, which is critical to this historic landscape. And by, again, sliding the pool yard to the left on your screen, again, that, that can be accomplished and, you know, visually, I think, maintain what this property has always had. And again, scale-wise, if we go on to the next image, just showing you relationships. So the, you know, the, the, the pool for this property, again, very thoughtfully positioned so that the, the neighbor to the, toward the lower side of your ski, screen with the, with the pool that's sort of as the circular brick form around it. The main sight line from that property, which is this, was the Sands residence, is the, the view line is out to the golf course. And there's a heavy, heavy buffer between the proposed pool and the neighbors. There is the, the Giannini property, which is the top of the screen and adjacent. Again, very, very heavily buffered. You can see that we're hundreds of feet off of Elmwood Avenue. So there's, there's, there's no issue there whatsoever. So in planning this, we have thought a lot about neighborhood context, where to put things to preserve the history of this property, where to put things to be good neighbors and, and, and do a, a very thorough job with it. Again, I think, as you know, I mentioned, I think, given the historic nature and our, our need to, to visit with the Preservation Commission, they had absolutely, in my mind, no issue whatsoever with the, with the site plan, location, scale in our approach to the project. If we are successful tonight with the area variances, again, the only thing that they were hoping to see was detailed explanation on exact materials. So I think with that, I'd like to open it up for questions and try to explain anything further that I, that I didn't hit quite thoroughly enough.
Okay, thanks to Mark. Okay, board members, questions for Mark, Mr. Bear? Go ahead, Judy.
Yes, um, is the chimney going to be functional or is it more for aesthetics?
Can we go back to the, 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 I think the images are probably the nicest. So if you could go back to the perspective image of the, the vantage from, there you go. So the, the chimney is a functional chimney. And one interesting note is that one of our early phases of this project, which goes back a couple of years ago, that we were before the Preservation Commission, we reworked the, the, the arrival court. And we were able to salvage a lot of medinastone from that project. And so we are repurposing that medinastone to build a full stone masonry chimney that will be wood burning and very traditional. It's being designed as, I think we actually have some photographs of the other chimneys, but it's, it's being designed to match, match those. Yeah, so you can see on the back of the house, that chimney, we're following, you know, following kind of the detailing with the stepped approach to the chimneys. This one is, is a cast stone material, but we're recycling the medinastone from the front of the property to do this.
So it is. I have one other question. How many months of the year do you feel that the cabana will be used?
We, we think it will be used definitely as a three-season building. And I think there's times when Mr. Judson may be out there even at this time of year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions, please go ahead, Kathleen.
Thank you, thank you so much. You mentioned that you spoke to the neighbors that are on the east view, closest to what you're calling the pool yard. But I don't recall you saying whether they were in support of the, the cabana and pool or they had any negative comments about it.
No, we, I, they are clients of mine. And I have explained the, the project to them. And they had no concerns. We are going to do, when they return to the area in the spring, we're going to do site walk so that we can enhance both sides of the property line. And their pool equipment is adjacent to, it says neighbors' equipment shed there. That is immediately adjacent to the equipment room for the proposed building. So I've explained to them that, yeah, obviously that's very intentional. And, and again, you know, we will be working closely with them. I, I talked to both, both Mr. and Mrs. about the project. And I, I think they're, they're absolutely fine. And we will do joint improvements to make both properties better.
And, and with regard to that, just kind of a follow-up question. I know you talked quite a bit about how there's going to be dense landscaping. I think someplace else it's a, you know, a great deal. It's going to be shielded, but I wasn't really sure what you were doing because it looked like you were taking down two trees in that area. So do you have kind of a general sense of what you're hoping to do to put up there so that it's more shielded?
Yes. So what we will do is I typically will do a, a, a mixed border in, in this kind of condition. We'll do a lot of, we'll do a lot of narrow growing conifers or evergreens. And we will have a layer of shrubs that will supplement that and some ornamental, some smaller ornamental flowering trees. And again, it will be densely layered so that both properties are nicely buffered. And we, we are fortunate to have existing evergreen hedge that is a little bit toward the driveway end of the pool cabana. And that will remain. And then we will be planting all of that dark green area around the pool and the pool cabana with, with significant amount of new planting. And again, it will, it'll be done, not only densely, but it'll be done in period-appropriate style so that what we do with these new plantings will be in harmony with the existing landscape around the property. Where we've done a ton of work on the front of this property with the changes in the driveway. We've planted literally hundreds of trees on that approach. And this spring, the entire front of the residence is being replanted in period-appropriate plants. And this, this process will continue into this project. And that's how we will approach it.
Okay, are you clear on that, Kathleen, then?
Yes, thank you.
All right, other questions for Mr. Bear?
Yeah, Mr. Bear, this is member Primo. I'm just trying to, so to the west is the Giannini's property, is that correct?
Yes.
And the Sands property is to the east and then a piece of it swings around south?
Uh, yes, it does. Exact, uh, it, well, it, it goes south to the golf course. If you look, yeah, there you go.
And then south of that, there's another, I'm pointing at it, but doesn't help you, of course. There's another residence there, a little bit.
Yes, yep.
And do we know who, who's that resident?
Mrs. Ronan.
And has anyone, I, the reason why I'm asking is because it looks to me from the topography that the, the property, the Judson property is up a little bit higher as compared to those properties to the south and to the, the east?
I would say Mrs. Ronan is probably slightly higher. The Sands residence, both of those residences, kind of Elmwood Hill Lane is the access to both of those residences.
Right.
Elmwood Hill Lane climbs from Elmwood Avenue to, up to the end of that road.
Okay.
Sands is not quite, Mrs. Ronan is almost to the cul-de-sac there. I think you can see the cul-de-sac in the lower left corner. Or they're, they're about, that's about where the top of the hill is. But they're both, their residences are both up pretty good. And the, the, Mrs. Ronan's view, principal view, her back terraces and so on, look away towards, I guess it would be the southwest. And she does have some view to the west, but the, the main orientation of her terraces are the other direction. But she's, she's nicely buffered from the Judsons. And the Sands view is really more due west. We did a lot of tree pruning, working with all, all three neighbors, Ronan's, Giannini's and, and Mr. and Mrs. Sands to open nice views to, to do west to the, the golf course. And so we're super, I guess, conscious and sensitive to trying to do a really nice job for, for all these neighbors, so.
Has, has anyone, have you talked to the Ronans or has someone talked to?
I haven't talked to Mrs. Ronan about this project. But again, the Sands and the Giannini's being most immediately impacted. I know Mr. Judson spoke with Mr. Giannini. And I, Mr. Judson spoke with Mr. Sands, but I recently spoke to both Mr. and Mrs. Sands about it.
Okay. All righty. Is there anyone else on the board that would like to ask any other questions to Mr. Bear? Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Mark. Okay, so is there anyone on this call that would like to speak regarding this application?
Dennis, this is Ken Gordon. I would like to share with the zoning board what the Historic Preservation Commission found with respect to this proposal. And I'd like to make that part of the public hearing record.
Okay, go ahead.
So just to put this in context, the Historic Preservation Commission was considering an application for a certificate of appropriateness. And under our code, the issue for the Historic Preservation Commission to consider is whether the improvements to this already designated landmark are compatible with the historic character of the property. And so in summary, the findings of the Historic Preservation Commission were that what this project proposes in terms of the substantial size of the cabana and the roof height of the cabana are in fact the minimum necessary variances that would be needed for this project to be compatible with the historic character of this property. And so they adopted a specific resolution, which I'd like to read for you. And this is a resolution that was adopted unanimously by the Historic Preservation Commission on January 28th, 2021. And it reads as follows. "The Historic Preservation Commission wishes to express to the Brighton Zoning Board of Appeals its support for the design features of the project, including but not limited to the substantial size of the planned outbuilding, the height and pitch of the roof of the outbuilding, and the location of the proposed pool yard. As such, design features enhance the compatibility of the proposed project with the historic character of this designated property."
Okay, very good. Thank you for reading that into the record. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. All right, does anyone need a few minutes or are we all set to keep going? I guess we can go. All right, Rick? See, all right, so we're going to start with 1A0121. This is 1675 Monroe Avenue. Does anyone have any concerns about the renewal of this? I certainly don't. Okay, then.
I'd just like, I know we had a discussion about the date of this, of this application. Kind of from a selfish standpoint, it's a lot easier to track keeping it per year instead of trying to cross over months of years.
I was thinking the same thing, Rick, yeah.
So I, I would suggest that we just kept it for the year 2021 and the year 2022.
Okay. Yeah, I think the one month isn't going to make a tragic difference though. Especially with the latitude that Ken pointed out as well, that the town's given, so. Hey, Judd.
Okidoki. Just making sure I've got my notes here. I move to approve application 1A-01-21 based on the following findings of fact. Number one, the events held by this applicant are often organized on short notice and thus would not be practical to acquire the zoning approval for each separate event. Number two, the property has been used in similar fashion for limited events over the course of the last several years without any noted disturbances or complaints, disturbances to or complaints from neighboring properties. Number three, proposed events will occur primarily during the day with no sound amplification or exterior lighting. There is a vegetation buffer that screens the property from neighbors to the southwest. Therefore, the granting of this request will not result in a change in the character of the neighborhood or pose a detriment to nearby properties. Conditions, number one, the temporary and revocable use permit is valid for six separate events per year from January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2022. Number two, each event shall last no longer than two days. Number three, the tent used for the events may be erected no more than two days prior to each event and must be taken down no later than two days after each event. Number four, food preparation must be done inside the building or off-site. Number five, all litter shall immediately be picked up from the site following each event. Number six, there shall be no sound amplification. Number seven, any lighting shall be limited to inside the tent. Number eight, all events shall conclude by 11:00 PM. Number nine, all necessary tent permits and other approvals required from the fire marshal should be obtained prior to each event.
Second, member Wright.
Okay, great.
Motion is to approve with conditions, Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson, right?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions, spirits.
Okay, very good. Okay, so the next application is East Henrietta Road for the Monument sign. So why don't we go around on this one and see what people think? Ed, what do you think? You got to unmute yourself, Ed.
Sorry. I mean, I guess my view is, is generally, I agree with the idea that having clear identification of the address is, is both helpful to the landowner and the people going by, particularly as we said, 35 miles per hour, but everyone's going 45. So having some identification is, is useful. Given the configuration of the site, it seems to be a, you know, more unique condition that the building's set back so far. So I guess I really don't. So, um, I guess I really don't have a problem with the monument sign per se. Um, I guess I'd like to hear other people's thoughts on
Yes.
whether it should just be the address, identification without business center, um,
Okay.
or, or not.
Very good. All right, Kathleen?
Uh, I agree with Ed. Um, I find that road terribly confusing and, um, and frequently frustrated as I can tell cars around me are trying to slow down or speed up looking for something. So I'm not opposed to the signage. I don't, um, don't have a particular opinion on how it should look or the language, but I like the idea of at least having the number and the street name.
Okay, Judy?
I agree with, with what's been said. I, as you know, um, have always said, I think that the number and the street are really the most important. Um, and I'm glad the size I think is appropriate. It's eight and a half inches. I had a ruler and that's not overly large considering you're out on the road. Um, and to me, this will be a, a safety factor for the area. I could go either way. If you want business center, that's fine. If you don't, I'm okay. I just am glad the numbered street.
Okay, good. Katie?
Yeah, I, I think that there's a legitimate need, um, so I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, and Judd?
Yeah, I feel the same. There's a, there's a real need for it and I don't think we need to condition whether or not it says business center. The address is important.
Right, right. Okay. All right. So yeah, and I, and I, I agree. I think the issue, that's why I asked about the occupancy of the building 'cause it is a multi-tenant building, so I don't think it's, um, a problem to call it the, a business center, 'cause I guess that's what it is. So, but again, I think the, that, that area is a, a busy corridor and to have some clarification that isn't touting any particular business, I think is more than reasonable, so.
I would also just add that we should include in the
Oh, I'm sorry, Andrea. I apologize. Go ahead.
No, that's okay. I, I roundly agree with everyone. Um, but I, just also including in the approval that, um, this property is also surrounded by other properties with monument signs. Um, and obviously, you know, there are different uses and there's different reasoning, but it, it almost begs for a monument sign, I think, at this location.
Okay, good. Okay, so, me, being that as it may, I guess, Jean, what do you think? Go ahead.
Yep.
Jean, just before you say that, um, I know I sent you guys out of an email and I did have the wrong application numbers in there. Um, so we do need a seeker statement for this particular application. Did you open that up and have that seeker statement? If you could just say that before you start the, uh, the motion?
Sure.
Thank you.
Rick, what about the other two, just so we clarify?
Um, 1A01 is a, is a type two action. So the one we just did has none. Um, anything done pretty much residential is a type two action. Uh, this application and the next application are on this app, um, on this actions, so we can make the seeker statement.
Yeah, okay, good. All right, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, the board, having considered the information presented by the applicant and having completed the required review pursuant to seeker, the board determines that the proposed project would not likely have a significant environmental impact and has made the following decision. Um, so then do I say motion to approve application?
Yeah.
Motion to approve application 2A0121 based upon the following findings of fact. Number one, the applicant is seeking to provide easily visible identification to assist in wayfinding in an area that has heavy traffic at times at high speeds. Number two, the building is set 276 feet back from the, on the property, making a freestanding sign appropriate for building identification. Number three, granting of the applicant's request for a freestanding sign will not result in a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood or be detrimental to surrounding properties as it is located in an industrial district where the businesses are spaced far apart and there are similar freestanding monument signs nearby. Conditions, number one, the sign shall not be lighted. Uh, number two, the sign shall be placed at the location described in the application, which is 10 feet back from the front setback. Number three, ARB approval shall be obtained.
Can I just add to that, that all necessary ARB and planning board approvals shall be obtained?
Thank you.
Short second.
Just a, just a question, and this is, uh, I apologize for, again, this is my newness and to your board. Um, would you or would you not condition your approval on the sign reading as proposed? 1057 East Henrietta Road Business Center?
Yeah, I think that's important, um, because like with, like what was stated earlier by the applicant, you know, if they came back and said, well, we're just gonna put a, a name of an, of a occupant out here. I don't think we want that, but I think it, that's smart that we condition it to the, the text shall be as per application.
Is the drawing submitted, right?
Right.
Yeah, and I think you noted, just for everyone's clarification, that the planning, or excuse me, the ARB's concern is more with the base of this thing, not the
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Jeff, uh, Jeff, if you're on, if you have any comments regarding the Architecture Review Board in regard to this, certainly pipe in. Jeff does staff the Architecture Review Board.
No, uh, what you're saying is correct. That's, they're okay with the sign itself, but they didn't, they wanted an alternate for the base.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. And Judy?
I just wanna know if the stenographer got that last, uh, condition, number four?
Yes, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Judy did second, Rick.
Okay, thanks. Motion is to approve with conditions. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson's right?
Yes.
Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, very good. Okay, the next application is this, uh, building on the corner of Lockdenville and, uh, back of the Tops Plaza. Um, why don't we go around again on that and we'll start with Andrea. What do you think, Andrea?
Um, my vote would be to table this and require that they present additional information regarding the operations of these two doctors' offices. I, I don't have a problem in general with approving lower parking counts when we don't need them. More impervious coverage isn't good for our town. It's not good for the environment if it's not necessary. But what they've presented is one line in the letter saying that the doctors don't need the parking. I, I want more explanation of why, you know, and, and the future plans are and, and a floor plan to show how many doctor's offices there are. And that would help us know how to condition this approval, um, which I'm not against approving it, but I would wanna condition it to make sure that however they're using the property now doesn't change, um, and, and grow into a parking problem in the future.
Okay, valid concern. All right, Jen, what do you think?
I would agree with that. I think my, uh, intuition is that it's fine. I, I agree that lower parking counts are in some ways better. I mean, uh, having swaths of, of parking that's not being used is not something I'm in favor of clearly. And it's surrounded by parking on all sides from other businesses as well. So I think in a pinch, somebody would find a spot. But that being said, I'm not sure that the applicant really provided quite enough detail to back up the claim that they don't need it. So tabling it for them to come back with that information would be doing our due diligence.
Okay, Kathleen?
I re, I agree with both Andrea and Jennifer.
Okay, and Ms. Dale?
Yeah, I, I was hoping that the presenter would have been able to answer the question about the current state of business that is, well, you know, or do they operate elsewhere and what was the parking like there? And, and, um, I think a little of that history would, would be very helpful.
All right, Ed?
Yeah, um, well, first I guess I just wanna clarify the, um, option of land banking. Uh, Rick, if we, if we did that, in essence, they'd have to go through a whole approval process for all the parking spaces and they'd have to get variances from us. And then they would just not use them for
Right, and site plan, and site plan approval too.
Right.
So that would be a far more It would be a far more complicated process and would actually, for the neighboring property owners, mean we'd have to give a variance to the, uh,
The bank parking. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, in three different areas, we would have to do that.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Well, I agree, we should ask for more information.
Okay.
Um, I, I guess, is I heard they said they, they think they'll have tenants in the basement?
They are definitely gonna have tenants in the basement.
Yes.
My understanding, it was a therapist and a chiropractor business. At the time this first came in, whether that has changed or not, I'm not sure.
And, and how does that affect the, how big the variance? Is it the same variance?
Well, I mean, they could, they could have come in and made the argument that the, the total mixture of tenants in here would never reach the 57 required parking spaces because they might make an argument that the chiropractor, the low generating medical use, uh, that the therapist might be just a one-on-one type of medical use. Um, so they could have looked at the building as a whole. Instead, they kinda concentrated on the owners who are taking the first floor and saying their business doesn't require it. Doesn't matter what we put on the second or the lower level. Any, any medical use could come in there and be fine by code. It's just that the first floor tenants will never reach the, um, code maximum.
Right. Okay, yeah, so, so I think asking for the information is good. I think that it was a little nebulous what, what they said. This is a cumbersome thing. We've gone down this road before and, um, you know, the enforcement, the, the whole thing becomes difficult. But I think in fairness, we, we, we should listen 'cause I think some of the questions, the probing questions were, were not answerable by this applicant. So to, to fashion something that relates to, um, getting more information about it. And I guess just to clarify, Rick, I think the lower level, based on what he has done here in this application, is that any medical use could go down there and it wouldn't matter if it was a therapist or a chiropractor or dentist or anything, the way he's proposed this. I think we're really talking about giving the latitude to the first floor.
Right.
I just wanna make sure everyone understands that. Okay.
So, so to make sure that you're not disappointed by what you get and the applicant is assisted by whatever information you request, I think you should have a specific list or somewhat of a specific list of what it is you're looking for. I heard floor plan. I heard a better description of the actual uses of all the space in the building. Um, and I heard, um, what the current parking requirements are and usages at the existing medical practices, if there are such existing medical practices. Um, and I think I heard a request for what the specific computations were that were done to arrive at the single line conclusion that, you know, need more space, um, or we'll never meet, you know, we'll never need 57. So I think you need to make those specific requests if you can. And, and I don't know, Rick, if that's something you communicate to the applicant, um.
Uh, we do it as a, as a board, as part of the decision process or the tabling process, and then I, I send those off to the applicant. So we'll, we'll formalize them right now.
Yeah, right.
What we're requesting.
Yeah, and Ken, just historically, for your understanding and, and how we generally approach these, is we, we will never really make a list per se, but we talk about the flavor and some specifics about what we're interested in. We don't just say additional information. But then Rick really goes into more detail with the applicant so that it's clear if they have questions as to what, what we're shooting for.
Right. Yeah, I just, for accountability, um, it's nice to know the specifics you're looking for.
Yeah.
Assisting the applicant, so you don't end up bouncing back and forth.
Yeah, it's always, it's always worked fine, so I appreciate what you're saying, but you know, there's always gonna be little gray areas and I think that's where staff really assist in, in this. And typically, it's worked along pretty well, as long as we don't, as you point out, leave out some drastic thing that if we wanted a floor plan and didn't ask for one, that that would be a little unreasonable, right? Okay, all right.
Can I ask, can I ask a question of the board? Um, do you want to hear back from them? And, and ask questions? And so we would leave the public hearing open? Are you comfortable with just information that they, you would receive?
I wanna leave it open because I, I, I'd like to hear more operational information. Why do they only need six parking spaces for patients?
And maybe that's another thing that we table it for is representation of the property owner.
Yes, yes.
They're the ones that can answer the questions that we had today. And unfortunately, they, they weren't on, um,
Correct.
um, meetings, so.
Okay.
All right, so whoever's making the motion, just, uh, state the fact that we're gonna keep the public hearing open.
Yes, uh, I've got it. Do you need the seeker on top of this part, table, or?
No, because we haven't made, well,
Okay.
Uh, no, not till we do the
Not until you, not until you take action to actually approve it.
Yeah, this, the interjection of this is new to everybody on this board, so I just wanna clarify. Okay. All right, so, uh, let me go ahead then. Um, I move that we table application 2A0221 for more information as follows and keep the public hearing open. The applicant should appear at the hearing to be able to address questions about the operation of the proposed first floor practice, provide a floor plan, discuss the specific uses and a history of the practice. Okay, does anyone think we would want anything else specifically? Seems like that would work. Okay. And, okay, so just, we need a second to that?
I'll second. Member Wright?
Thank you.
Motion is to table and leave the public hearing open. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson's right?
Yes.
And Mr. Mites?
Thank, yes.
Motion to table the public hearing open carries.
Okay, so the final application is the Judson property. So let's kinda go around on that one. Ed, what do you have to say about the Judson property?
Yeah, you know, um, I had a lot of questions, but I'm, uh, actually fine with it. I, I think, uh, certainly hearing the comments from uh, Historic Preservation was, was helpful as part of it. Um, I think they have, um, located it with trying to show sensitivity to the, the site and everything else. I actually think at least the, uh, elevations of the, the actual building itself look very nice, so. Um, you know, it's one of these situations where you have a code and you have size specifications in them, but then you have, uh, probably a unique property like this, uh, unique residence on it that, you know, this is why we give variants of, so.
Okay, very good. Okay, Kathleen, what do you think?
Um, based on the presentation and the materials, I do not have a problem.
Okay. And how about Jen?
Yeah, it fits into, to architecture, the, the placement is really sensitive to the neighbors and the sightlines. And I, I don't have a problem with that either.
Okay, Andrea?
Great.
Okay, and Ms. Dale?
Yes, I, I agree. I think it's, I think it's well done.
Okay, I do too. Okay, very good.
Wait a minute, you blocked up twice now. I didn't
You know why?
I didn't speak up.
I don't have your picture on there. I'm sorry, that's why.
Okay, I didn't speak up about Lockdenville 'cause I wasn't called on, but I'm gonna speak up now.
All right.
I'm always concerned about neighbors and so on, and as long as they have spoken with him, it seems at great length. Um, and, uh, everyone is happy with it and there really is substantial buffering. I mean, it's very well, you know, filled with older trees. I'm okay.
Okay, very good. All right, yeah, I, I am as well. I think, you know, they've, as Ken pointed out, the Historic Preservation Board, which, you know, looks pretty arrogantly at these as Ken pointed out, the Historic Preservation Board, which, you know, looks pretty arrogantly at these types of projects, I think, felt that the scaling and mass of it, because that's really what we're looking at here, um, were correct, so I think that's certainly noteworthy and probably should be addressed as well in the determination here. So, okay, so Kathleen, I guess, go right ahead.
Right. I move to approve application two A dash zero three dash two one based on the following findings of fact. One, the first part of the variance request is to allow a pool cabana to be nine hundred and sixty-eight square feet in lieu of the maximum two hundred and fifty square feet allowed by code. The second piece is to allow the cabana's ridge line and chimney to exceed the maximum height allowance of sixteen feet established by code. Three, the homeowner's lot is extensive, being approximately two and a half acres. Four, the proposed height and size of the cabana is consistent with the style and significant scale of the current historic landmark home and garage and would not be out of balance with the rest of the neighborhood, nor would it create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. Five, the twenty-three-point-six-feet ridge line and the thirty-point-six-feet chimney height on the cabana are the minimum heights necessary to maintain consistent roof lines, proportion, and chimney details with the homeowner's residence and garage. Six, the cabana will have no adverse effect on impact, I'm sorry, or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, as the cabana will be completely concealed from Elmwood Avenue and will be heavily buffered from all adjacent properties with dense plantings. Seven, there's no evidence that there would be a negative impact on the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. Conditions, one, the variance applies only to the pool cabana as described in the application and testimony provided and will not apply to future projects. Two, all necessary building permits shall be obtained. Second.
I'd like to, I'd also like to put all necessary, um, historical preservation commission approval shall be obtained.
Oh, thank you.
They, Ken, they were tabled, right, at the last meeting?
Yep.
Okay, so let's put that one in there.
Good. Anything else?
Anybody? Um, do you guys want to, um, I don't think it's necessary, but I'm just, uh, ask, do you want to do anything in regards to the landscaping plan? Uh, I'm sure they're gonna move forward with it. I don't know if we have to specifically condition that this be landscaped, but it's something to think about.
Yeah, I I mean, I I think the the motion um, does say based upon the plans and discussions that were submitted, but if we want to make that specific, I mean, but that's how I understood the motion.
Yes.
Well, I I kind of understood it as the structure itself. I I I didn't kind of take it as the entire, the entire plan and everything that's going on with it. I I think if we want to be a little more specific, we can say landscaping shall be installed as per the plan submitted.
Yeah, I think that's probably fine.
Separate condition.
You okay with that, Kathleen?
I am.
Okay, so let's just add that as the last condition then. Okay. And who was the second?
I did, Judy.
Okay, Judy, thank you. I knew you were out there somewhere.
Motion is to approve with conditions. Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson's right?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
And Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, any concerns about next month from anybody as far as scheduling?
Do we think the Baptist tempo will be going next month? I don't know where they are. Um, they're still working pretty diligently with the neighborhood. Um, they have scaled back the plans. We've seen a concept on their scaled-back plans. Um, but I do believe they're still, like I said, working diligently with the neighbors to try to come to some
Yep.
conclusions and
Okay.
I have a question about, do you remember, guys, back with that gas station between the firehouse on East Avenue and the Friendly Home? Remember that little tutoring thing?
Yep.
And they kept postponing, 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 and finally, I think we said too many times, does
Yeah, anytime if, you know, we feel like we've been carrying this over and over and over, we can deny it without prejudice. And we don't have to accept their postponement. It's, you know, does does get expensive for the pound. I have to re-advertise it every
Yeah.
month. Um.
And we don't get covered for the, yeah, okay.
Right. I mean, we only get one fee. We don't get a fee every time, so.
Right.
If they're revising their plans, are they going to resubmit different plans ahead of time for us to review, or is it just?
No, they would have to be resubmitted prior to this, because the variances are gonna change. I I
Yeah.
If they if they move forward with the revisions, then variances are gonna change, so it will be
Hmm.
Well, Rick, um, so the planning board is going to be lead agency for seeker, right?
Correct.
So they have to make a determination of significance before
We can make a decision. We can hear it, but we can't make a decision.
Correct.
They have made their decision on seeker.
So what would the typical timing be that we would go forward and have the public hearing and then hold it until uh, the lead agency concludes with seeker?
Correct. We would have to table it until seeker has been determined by the lead agent, and then as an involved agent, we would, um, either make our own findings or we would adopt the lead agency's findings.
Right.
Okay, very good. All right.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening and be safe.
Everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.